Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this a regularly and newly posted meeting of the Harlem City Commission to Order, and this time I'd like to call upon Mr. Burkhart to lead this meditation for...
Please stand. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Actually, I have two members of the local United Way could not be here tonight. They've asked me to let everybody know about the United Way's National Day of Action, which is Friday, June the 29th. Locally, it is called "A Day of Action," and will be hosted at Long C Hill Park. It's based around reading and books for the youth. Actually, on their flyer, it says, "Our Day of Action is dedicated to children," and will feature reading stations, a born learning trail for children to explore, and food to be provided, all free. There are a number of different local sponsors: Bass Pro Shop, The City, Boys and Girls Club, Golden Corral, Gladys Porter Zoo, HEB, Magic Valley Riders, those, and a few others. Our own, the city's summer recreational program, the summer playground program, will actually be participating in this. It's about 200 kids, so they'll be attending. So it should be a good event, and they respectfully request that if the mayor or any commissioner would like to read a book that afternoon, to just let them know.
To read a book aloud?
To read a book aloud.
(Laughter)
June the 29th, 11 to 2, Long C Hill Park.
A kid that gives books, right?
You can put my name in there.
Okay.
Just let me know when.
Yes, sir.
Second item, this is the city's Independence Day Festival, July the 4th. We will have music. A festival, actually, the J.C.'s are helping us out with the festival. Yes, there will be bear sales. There will be a concert that evening at Long C Hill Park. Jimmy Gonzalez, Igru Gomez, is the headliner. The parade starts at 4, the festival at 5:30. I believe the music begins around 6, the headliner probably 9. And I will say, we're going to have the largest fireworks show in the valley that night, about 9:30. The White Wings have agreed to move their game back, the game time, back to 6:30, so hopefully it'll be done 9:15, 9:30, and the fireworks will go up after that.
Great. Any other announcements, public events being done will go to Item 2, which is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep Program, which is the second afternoon to the films. Marjorie Dennis, Kelly Streary.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, the public, we wanted to make sure that the public was aware of some of the activities that are happening. This clean sweep activity happened in District 1, which is Commissioner Castillo's district. We get 1.1 tons of debris picked up. We had also, we had 10 tires that were picked up, and just kind of give you a rundown of some of the volunteers and what they picked up, and some of the before and after pictures. We want to thank all the volunteers that participated. May I have some certificates of recognition?
(Inaudible) We have Omar Rios, Pata Alcacer, Stephanie Marcus, Ariana Ruiz, and Matthew Silva. All right, we want to thank, hi there. We want to thank Omar and Pata, of course, two great employees of our city and our MPO. And we want to thank you for participating in this. And your Stephanie? Well, Stephanie, we want to thank you and congratulate you for being a junior code ranger, and for helping with this project. We want to thank Piranha and Matthew for helping with this and getting their certificates to them. But I know I always wanted to be a junior code ranger, and so now I feel like I'm the chief code ranger. These are the deputy chief code rangers over here, and we really appreciate you guys going out there and helping us clean up our city. And so thank you so much. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you, guys, for volunteering on the weekends. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I just want to announce that the next month Neighborhood Sweep is going to be in District 2. And we'll announce the date at the next week. Well, actually, we'll get that out to everybody because I don't think we're having a meeting before that.
All right.
We'll get it out.
Thank you for that. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular payment of May 16. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Here now, I ask that there are a motion to approve the minutes presented.
(Inaudible).
All those in favor say aye. If it's approved, Item 4, A through E is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda for final reading?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to be adopted.
(Inaudible).
All those in favor say aye. I suppose my side, motion carries. I'm going to skip to Items 16, 17, and 18, just to consider and take action on whether or not to authorize staff to solicit proposals for employees' health insurance, or approve the renewal of the contract with the existing health insurance carrier, Blue Cross Blue Shield for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Mayor, City Commissioners, we have received the proposal from Blue Cross to renew the rate and a reduction of 3 percent. So we're looking for direction from you. If you'd like to go out for proposals or continue with the process.
I have a question, yeah. How in the world would, why does an insurance company lower premiums 3 percent? Explain that.
Our experience, our rates have been, we've been doing good. Our...
Claims, why?
Where you compare the cost of insurance versus our claims, we've actually done good this year.
Hasn't this, I don't think, has this like, have they mandated that insurance companies, they, they capped their profits for the day?
I'm not 100 percent sure. I know we've got some reps here from our agents and Blue Cross here also.
As far as the claims, what were the claims, the amount?
From the stats we got, we're at about a 57 percent as cost versus what the tax would be.
I would say we should get more than 3 percent back. Aren't there money left on the table there?
We don't know what other claims would be coming up, so they might be able to answer that, but...
We still have 30, 40 months left in the year to determine. Last year, we talked about when we were trying to determine who to go with, about doing a customer satisfaction survey with our employees to see if they had any issues with the healthcare providers. Have we done that this year?
We did not do a survey, but usually, we're the first to hear when there's issues. We've had no major issues. The only things that we usually come across is when they want to compare where we had a full HMO plan a number of years back to what we've got now. At that time, to keep that plan would have been, at that time, like a 30 percent increase some years back. So just based on the service, we've done okay. We've done good.
Could you come up with a form to send out to the employees for customer satisfaction with the insurance program?
Yes, we can.
I don't think it should be that because the only ones that are going to participate in a form would be the ones that have issues. And if you don't have any problems, or, I mean, I think it should kind of be more random than, than maybe just overall say, okay, submit, you know, if you have problems with it, then you're going to get, and have those issues only come up, only the bad thing, nothing positive.
But even that, if you're claimed to have trapped, you're not going to have that many people involved, and the survey is a salt. And then you go buying what you've got versus on employees that you have, and there's your percentage. So it'll, I mean, I think we're comfortable.
What would be the implication if we were to go out and look for additional, just some quotes? Can we do that as a whole, just find out what else is out there, if there's something?
We would have to go, we would have to go through the process, and at that time, they would use a different period because we would have a new period of claims activity. And if we've had some higher claims, it might impact the rate.
The answer would be yes, Commissioner. The, what we are asking from the commission at this point is that we need to make a decision now so that we have enough time to do the transition. We don't want to be in the same situation we were last year, where we cut that short, the time short. So yes, we could go out there, we could run the risk of them being better or them being worse than, than the current rate.
I think if there's a case where they are worse, then we can still go.
Well, I think at that point, Blue Cross Blue Shield would take the offer off the table.
We've got a representative here.
But is that a dead, drop dead offer? I mean, 2 percent, that's it?
Yes, originally, it was a break even. After the city manager met with them, they came back with this, with this offer.
If I may say something, Blue Cross Blue Shield, very highly sound insurance company. I think A, best rating is A-plus, and a 3 percent discount. I say you say, "Thank you very much," and of course, yeah.
I say we can Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That's what I mean.
Okay, is that a motion?
I make a motion, go ahead and accept Blue Cross Blue Shield proposal.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? It's a good, it helps us know now for budget purposes. Definitely would be helpful. What you're saying is that if we have, if we have some claim experience that is negative between now and the time, we have to make the decision that that could impact the rate, and that Blue Cross Blue Shield might take that off the table.
Of course, it could go either way.
Could go the other way, but, okay.
(Inaudible).
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to see if we could solicit other proposals. I think there's probably something better out there. There's money on the table, you know. 57 percent is pretty good, and I think, you know, other carriers feel the same way.
The problem is, is in the insurance business, you only want to deal with A, A-plus companies, and that's a smaller and smaller margin. There are some big companies that are having some financial difficulty, and I won't name them right now, but it's not Blue Cross Blue Shield.
There are, I think, there are...
We just have a year left on this.
They actually, on the contract that, that we, that was approved last time, they have four renewal options.
Four renewal options?
But, but those would be...
But we'll bring it to you each year.
Every year, we'll bring it back to the commission.
But, you know, the thing though is that, if they're willing to do this, and we can keep on the same track, if we do decide to go off business here...
Okay, yeah, we're going to have the upper hand over to some of the other companies because of the amount of claims that have gone down.
Well, hopefully, stay down.
There's a little work to our management.
Can we get the survey out, our, how fast can we get the survey out to find our customer satisfaction?
We can get a survey out pretty fast, but if we have to come back in two weeks, that's going to put us behind schedule, and we may face the same problems we had last time.
Well, you know, whether we approve this and move forward with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I still...
We'll still do the survey.
We still need to do a survey. We need to understand if there's some, you know, if there's some shortcomings with that coverage, if we need to take care of our employees. The other thing that I want to talk about is that, are there some better preventive maintenance opportunities going forth with this new contract? Because I think preventive maintenance is what keeps our rates down.
Yes, part of, part of what they're looking at in the renewal is improving some of the diabetic testing, and we're also looking at a, a plan for, they do a lot of preventive stuff. It's something they call catapult. That...
Is there, is there a representative that can explain more detail what the new plan benefits going to be, both respect?
The person is here.
Good afternoon. My name is Tita Hiduegas, and I work with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. And what we're implementing, we have many wellness activities that your employees can participate in. Last year, during the open enrollment, we went ahead and promoted. And we are planning, if with your approval, and if you approve, to renew with Blue Cross. That's what we're trying to promote again, and make your employees aware of what we have for them to participate, to get them better. Another option that we have is a catapult, and it is a provider that comes from, will be coming in, and what they do, they go ahead and do lab tests for your employees. So they'll be testing, and then we'll have a consultation with a nurse, and they will be given a report with the findings of whatever that may be.
Kind of like a wellness test?
Like a wellness test. And your, the, the good part about this wellness event is that the primary physician, the family doctor, will have a copy of that test result, that report that will be given to your employee, will be sent to that doctor for that specific member, so they can have that.
Okay, then this is the new benefit base above and beyond what was offered last year or in the current year?
This is something that it is, it is paid through the plan because the provider, it's a Blue Cross contracted provider, so that plan is, is through the Blue Cross. They will submit the claim directly to Blue Cross.
So, I mean, it's a question, when you start doing this, you have schedules of where city employees can go to, you know, or, you know, I notice you guys have a bus driving around, and that kind of thing?
No, there will be, you know, if you say, "We need you at the waterworks, we need you at the water department, the waste department," they will set up out there for, for your employees.
And you can do that with every department in the city?
They can move around, yes. And it's best to have it between the period of, in the morning, as early as it can be, but, you know, recommended from 7 to 11, with the member, the dependent, they will have to be fasting.
Yeah, well, it'll be up to the department. Does this set it up with you, or are you trying to set up with the department?
Oh, we set it up.
You'll be set up through H.R.
Through H.R.
Where are you all located?
Locally.
Where?
I'm in Mission. I live in Mission. Yes, sir.
And what kind of, what office do you have there? Is it just the claims office? What type of office?
It is just a marketing office. And I travel, I visit the groups in the valley.
How many people do you have working? How many people do you have working there?
Myself.
Just one?
Yes. And we have the, the workforce office, and we have the customer service. Now, that's that most of the calls go direct to our customer service department through the 1-800 numbers.
So basically, when you do this, you know all these volunteers together and just go and do your programs, right?
Mm-hmm. Any other questions you might have?
Okay, any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, to, to renew the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield with a 3 percent reduction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, motion carries. Item 17 is considered to take action whether or not to authorize staff to solicit proposals for employees' life insurance, or approve the renewal of the contract with the existing life insurance carrier, unit for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Same thing, a unit has offered a renewal without a rate increase, keeping it at the same rate we are right now. I know that there were some, there was a couple of folks that did pass away last year, so I was thinking that we might have gotten an increase, but there was no increase in this.
And for those people who passed away, was UNPROMPT in delivering the money to the beneficiary?
From what I understand, we heard no complaints.
So the seamless?
Okay, is there, is there a motion to...
Yeah, I make a motion to accept UNPROMPT life insurance proposal for this year. It's activated.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we need to do, we don't need, we don't need it to, item 18.
And Mayor, just for the record, the city's staff attorney should note that Commissioner Castillo has abstained from Items 16, 17, and 18, and he's welcome to rejoin the group.
Okay, Item 5, we'll back to Item 5. Public hearing to consider ordinance on first reading for the aforementioned rideaway, a right-of-way OK on the southern end of Russell Lane, item 63 acre tract, land out of Block 10, Valley Grove subdivision, survey 140.
Mayor, is that...
Who's going to maintain that, or where is it going?
It's going to be, the developer's going to maintain.
Do you have a written agreement with the developer, or is that...
It's going to be included in the subdivision, so replant.
Part of that Lot 22?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. I suppose, like some, motion carries. Item 16, it's a public hearing, considered ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated end district to general retail district for 3.37 plus or minus acres out of Block 167, San Benito Land Water Company subdivision, located on the west side of FM 509, South of Humana's Road, Africa Edgar Garza.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant's requesting to rezone the subject property from not designated zoning district to general retail district to allow for single-family residences on one of the tracks and commercial business on the adjacent track. This property's located on FM 509, it's south of Humana's Road, or actually about four miles south of Expressway 77. Most of the general area is vacant. There is some residential use towards the south and towards the east, and there's a commercial business towards the northeast. Future land use plan shows this area as light industry. Request is not consistent with the future land use plan, however, it's consistent with the existing general land use in the area. Public hearing was conducted by the affected property owners. Staff didn't receive any complaints. Staff is requesting approval. The PNC Commission also recommends approval. Got any questions? And the applicants are also present for any questions.
I have a question. When you showed the other slide, that's a narrow frontage. How wide is that frontage?
Actually, their frontage is about, it's 140 feet wide and it's about 1,300 feet deep.
Okay, so that creates the illusion of a narrow.
Right. Item 5 is a public hearing. I love the public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak for or against this proposed rezoning?
Thank you very much. My name is Edgar Garza. Yeah, my final, I'd like to thank you for letting us be here. Basically, what I want to do is build a house there, and like, I'm a mechanic. I work with 18-wheelers and semis. Los Indios Bridge is like one mile, one minute away from there, so all the traders go by. So what I want to do about one side, build a shop so they can just stop by, you know, work on them, live off of that, you know, be a good citizen, you know. I just live on there with you all. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak for or against this item? Close to public hearing, and I have two, which is considered to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the aforementioned rezoning request. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding zoning ordinance of the city of Carlangen, rezoning from not designated end district to general retail DR district for 3.37 plus or minus acres out of Block 167, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, located on the west side of FM 509, south of Humana's Road, providing for relocation and ordaining other management.
Governor, second. Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign, motion carries. Good luck with your business and your new...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 7 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated end district to residential single-family R1 district, block 6, countryside states, located at 15718 Sunnyside Lane, Africa Edgar Garza.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant's requesting to rezone the subject property from not designated zoning district to residential single-family, to allow expansion from the existing store given on the property. This property's located off Paltus Palace Road. Most of the area is currently not designated, mostly in general land use, is residential single-family. Future land use shows this area as resident, as high density residential use. Well, it's not consistent with the future land use plan. It is a lower intended zoning and generally consistent with the land use in the area. Public hearing was conducted by the PNC Commission. There was no concerns. Staff is requesting approval, and the PNC Commission is agreeing.
Mayor, Public, item 5 is a public hearing. I love the public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak for or against this proposed rezoning? Is there anyone? Here no one on close to public hearing. If you go to Item 8, consider to take action, adopt and approve an ordinance on first reading for the aforementioned rezoning request. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding zoning ordinance of the city of Carlangen, rezoning Lot 6, countryside states, staffed division, located at 15718 Sunnyside Lane, from not designated end district to residential single-family R1 district, providing for relocation and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Some go for a...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I love this, suppose, motion carries. Item 8, discussion on six-month report of specific use permit, Articulation Number 11-54 issued to Charlene Torres to allow adult business tattoo parlor at GR, District 1418, Tyler Streets, Suite 5, Mary Lee's description, 1648 acres, made part of Lot 912, Winter Place Edition.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a six-month report on establishment that was issued a specific use permit for a tattoo parlor on the Tyler Square Shopping Center, which is located on the southwest corner of 77, Sunshine Strip, and Tyler Avenue. This report is one of the conditions for the specific use permit. As you recall, there was some concerns about music, or possible loud music, or lording, and the, that there is a residential use towards the south of this property. This request was, was reviewed by the code enforcement department, money department, and the police department. The code enforcement and police department haven't received any complaints on this establishment or any code violations. An activity report was provided in the packet from the police department. There was six calls that generally were reported, but none of the incidents were part of that particular suite, which is a 600-foot suite, which would be this suite on the corner here.
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign, motion carries. Uh, good luck with your business and your new.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not-designated end district to residential single-family R-one district, block six, countryside estates, located at one-five-seven-one-eight Sunnyside Lane, African Garza.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's requesting to rezone the subject property from not-designated zoning district to residential single-family to allow expansion from the existing store given on the property. This property is located off Paltus Palace Road. Most of the area is currently not designated, mostly in general land use, is residential single-family. Future land use shows this area as resident, as high-density residential use. Well, it's not consistent with the future land use plan. It is a lower-intended zoning, generally consistent with the land use in the area. Public hearing was conducted by the PNC Commission. There was no concerns. Staff is recommending approval, and PNC Commission is.
Mayor, if I ask, item A is a public hearing. I love the public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak for or against this proposed rezoning? Is there anyone hearing none? On close of public hearing, if you don't have item B, consider take action, adopt and approve an ordinance on first reading for the above-mentioned rezoning request, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance to abandon the zoning ordinance of the city of Carlington, rezoning lot six, countryside estates, stuff the division, located at one-five-seven-one-eight Sunnyside Lane, from not-designated end district to residential single-family R-one district, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I love the supposed motion carries. Item A, discussion on six-month report of specific use permit ordinance number eleven-dash- fifty-four, issued to Charlene Torres to allow adult business tattoo parlor and GR district located at one-four-one-eight East Tyler Streets, suite five, Maryland District, point-six-four-eight acres, being part of lots nine, twelve, Winston Place addition.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a six-month report on establishment that was issued a specific use permit for a tattoo parlor on the Tyler Square Shopping Center, which is located on the southwest corner of seventy-seven Sunshine Strip and Tyler Avenue. This report's one of the conditions for the specific use permit. As you recall, there was some concerns about music, or possible loud music, or lording, and the, that there is a residential use towards the south of this property. This request was, was reviewed by the code enforcement department, planning department, and the police department. The code enforcement and police department haven't received any complaints on this establishment or any type of code violations. An activity report was provided in your packet from the police department. There was six calls that generated a report, but none of the incidents were part of that particular suite, which is a six-hundred-foot suite, which would be this suite on the corner here. Staff is recommending that the business continue operating, and the business has been in compliance with the ordinance.
Well, you got me curious now, there's not a bar there. What were the six calls on?
Actually, two of them were traffic accidents on Tyler Avenue. There was two well for concerns for.
They just used that local address.
Yeah, they used that local address, because there was about eleven suites in the strip, so none of them were related to this issue.
And we didn't charge a, another fee?
No, yeah, right.
Waited for a second.
I think, the ring of, uh, City Police Chief Mayor, back there up to the front.
Yes, sir.
Retain to this item, I mean, have you had any, you know, major problems out there?
No, not at all, nothing.
I think there was some indication by the, the operators that they would be doing business on the backside of the, that would.
No, it was just that we, I think we had a complaint with the lady behind us, because they were notified.
They said that.
And they didn't know what type of business was going on, and she's had issues with the restaurant parking in front of her, her house.
That's right. And, and so we just wanted to bring this back and review.
Yeah, six months.
Out, it was good, apparently it stood fine, absolutely no, no problem, so, and this is just a discussion item, so there's no action, we take it. Right. So, any other questions or discussion?
Now, what did we, did we give them special permit, SUP, or, or was it one here? I know we talked about the eliminated SUP.
Their, their permit was approved in perpetuity, so.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to item nine.
And no, this will be the last report we get, right?
Right, correct, yeah.
Consider take action to allow license to approach twenty-plus or minus speed to the city's sixty-foot right-of-way located on El Camino Real Avenue for post-traffic island being a zero-point-one-three-plus-or-minus acres out of El Camino Real Road right-of-way, city permission, Cameron County, Texas, as reported in cabinet one, slot twenty-six-thirty-two-dash-b, Cameron County, I approach.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant's requesting a license to approach to allow a twenty-by-forty foot traffic island, which would be located in the center of El Camino Real Road, which would be approximately about six-hundred feet from the center line of Russell Lane and Camino Real Road, which, this is a Russell Lane here in the Sturt Place Road, should be in the center of this subdivision. Twenty-five, twenty-by-forty-foot traffic island, this request was reviewed by the city engineer and the fire prevention department and the utility companies, and neither of the subject departments have any objections to the proposed traffic island. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the developer maintaining, being responsible for the maintenance of that, this traffic island.
What is the reason they want the traffic island?
Uh, they want to, like, help beautify the subdivision, they're gonna put some landscaping in the center, low-maintenance landscaping in this island.
Traffic, calm, they calm, calm, the common traffic.
They're also having, you know, private drives towards the back, which will be, the garages will be towards the rear, so that, you know, help improve the traffic in that subdivision.
What, what's the traffic flow gonna be around that island? Is it the same typical traffic flow, or is it gonna be a circular traffic flow?
It's a typical traffic flow. They'll have sixteen-foot guard axes on the side, which will be a way to regress towards the east.
I, I think that's a good idea. I think it's something that, that we might wanna look at, it's a possibility for some of the other intersections, and that's a very, it's a sound design as far as traffic calming. They're popular in other, other cities more north, but I think that's a good idea.
I wanted to bring that up during our, our report, our planning and things the mayor set up to help beautification and also a safety issue.
So we looked at having developers do that in these subdivisions.
Right. All right, uh, is there any other discussion? Then there's, is there a motion to?
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think the motion carries. Item ten, discuss, consider take action to change the rego meeting, any of the Harlottian city commission schedules for July fourth, two thousand twelve, to a different date?
The, the next city commission actually falls on a holiday, so we're looking for guidance of the commission, whether we wanna pump it up or, or down.
Are you on? You're on, you're out at last, no, far.
Um, I think, I think we should move it to Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
July third.
Tuesday, July third, yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Tuesday.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Second.
Uh, so I'll make the motion, then.
Tuesday, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eleven, discussion on Harlottian Water Works' city project to extend reclaim defluent water to Hugh Ramsey Nature Park in purpose of filling existing ponds.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, just here to update you, bring you up to speed on the progress of this project that was approved, that was approved by the commission as part of Water Works' capital improvement program, I believe, last year. The idea is to bring an effluent line from the treatment plant to the, to the Hugh Ramsey Nature Park. There are existing ponds, dry ponds, at that park. The intent is to fill those ponds with this water, about a million gallons a day.
A million gallons?
A million gallons a day. The line has been constructed up to the point you see here, this is, this is Harrison, this is Soccer Complex, Harrison, this is four-ninety-nine, Ed Carey, and this is the, the park here.
Where's the existing line in, I'm sorry?
The red is the existing line that's been constructed up to this point. It's up to the park boundary. And so, the project wasn't gonna proceed until there was an update to this board that...
But there's also a, a branch off to the Soccer Complex already, right?
This is a, a zoomed-in picture of the nature park. This isn't the entire nature park. Actually, the, the line comes to this point here, and it will proceed in through the park. The point that needs to be made is that they will be removing approximately seven feet of brush inside the park boundary, adjacent to four-ninety-nine for the line. I believe the original intent was to go into the right-of-way, and that idea has been abandoned. It's more feasible to go inside of the park, and then up adjacent to the bathrooms, or to the restroom facility, and then it will start filling ponds.
Yeah, we have some limited irrigation already throughout that park, right?
Correct.
But doesn't, are we gonna convert all of that to this flow?
I think, by the way, while he's walking up there, if you've driven down four-ninety-nine in between the park and Harrison and seen the lavender-colored pipes off to your right, that's what, that's this project.
The, the well system or the irrigation system there has been marginal, I think, since it first installed, so there's been a, a desire for supplemental water, and, and you may or may not recall, this project to date, the installation was in cooperation with the Bureau of Reclamation grant, and so all the progress that's been done to date has been through that grant project, so it's, it's time to complete it and take it down to the park. I believe representatives are here, you know, from the, from the, the group that maintained it, and, and so we're, we're ready to proceed.
Okay, I just have, just a intersection question. Currently, you mentioned a well, is that the water that's used for irrigation, that's not fresh water, from the freshwater supply?
No, sir, there's, there were wells installed in that area, and we understand, we didn't operate and maintain those, but I think they were very problematic from, from the, you know, approximately when they were installed?
Um, oh, yes.
About ten years ago, and.
And this, and this system has some line pressure in it?
Just, it'll gravity to these, these ponds.
Okay, okay.
Now, it won't spray, but it'll gravity to the ponds.
Well, that's my question, could they, if they wanted to get away from man, for well maintenance and electricity associated with that, could they use the line pressure?
No, sir, there's not enough line pressure to, to actually operate a, a distribution or a structural system. It, it's, it will, it will fill, it'll be enough head to fill the lakes. It'll be the same situation as the Soccer Complex and the Gophors.
And they're currently filling those lakes with the wells that they have?
Uh, well, when they, it's dry, they, the wells haven't, have stopped working.
So there's no nature going? It's, it's all dry.
You have a question. What is the square foot imprint of this, of these ponds? I didn't know they existed, because it has a range in years, so there's been no watering.
They're not real large. Uh, I think total acreage is maybe a couple acres, or less.
Maybe.
And you're gonna be charging a million?
I, I don't really think, a million is available. But, but our, our intention is to continue this reuse system into the core part of the city. Ultimately, we'd like to reach Tony Butler, Gophors, at some point, when finance is, is available.
And then, um, do you have an idea about percolation through the soil? How much will be lost? Will it go all the way down to the waterbed of the Arroyo, or will, is there enough clay to seal it on the bottom?
Uh, the natural soils here are, are fairly tight clay. How much of this area has been disturbed, but that, that was not part of the, our request was to, for fresh water, so we, we'd make water available.
I'll, I'll suspend the biology class.
Thank you very much. But those ponds, those ponds were initially designed, correct? To hold water?
Yes.
To create the, an eco-type?
Yes.
We get points on this on?
The right-of-way.
T N R C, T Q, or?
Uh, well, they, the Bureau of Reclamation felt, felt enough, I would, to, to give us a grant, so, yeah.
But we're pretty consistently using this water on the soccer field, or on the?
Yes, that's, that's one-hundred percent, as all this goes, the soccer fields is this water.
Wouldn't we water it every day, or parts every day, or?
About every day.
On the soccer field?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other, any other discussion?
I would like to.
Good for you.
Oh, Ms. Butcher, come on, this will start tomorrow, unless you have any objections.
My name is Linda Butcher, and I am a volunteer over at Ramsey Nature Center. I've been volunteering there for four years. I'm the conservation chairman for Aurora, Colorado Audubon Society, and I'm also a Texas master naturalist. And we are thrilled to death to have this water. It is going to make Ramsey Nature Center a true world-class birding center. I think it will bring in a lot of money to the city. We do have water in the ponds, and I would invite any of you that would like to come, come visit the center, come see where the construction. I was very concerned when they said they were going to actually do the construction and remove vegetation, but I walked with Jim Bailey from Harlottian Water Works. We walked, and he showed me exactly where the pipeline is going, and the Audubon Society and master naturalist approve of the location. There's going to be very small amount of habitat loss, and there was one tree in question, and they assured me that if they could possibly get around cutting the tree down, that they would. But it will make a huge difference in Ramsey Nature Center. The ponds, one of the ponds does have water in it, but to have four ponds with water in it is going to just bring in more birds and bring in more people.
As a birder, I thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your, all your volunteer efforts out there. We, we know that there are a lot of you out there.
If anybody wants to come out there, I will give you a tour of where the, the pipeline is.
One of the other things to mention is that, once the, I can light trail, it comes online, it will hook up with the, the work over there.
I mean, anything we can do to save.
Come on, come on up to the podium and, and state, state your name and your, Mr. Moore.
Jerry Moore, seven-oh-nine, town name. Yeah, just, Commissioners, Mayor, just wanted to bring up a point also, just to consider. I, I've traveled through that, and hiked through there, and it is a nice trail in the summertime, and you're desperately in need of water, and, you know, the idea to reuse the effluent is, is a good idea, it's a noble idea, as they do on the island. My concern that you all need to be aware of, I guess that is, the old city land dump, and when they dug out the land and the, and the ground for the pipe up there, the, I noticed that all the trash that was there from the previous dump was in that subsided area that had caved under, I guess, from previous rainstorms and such. And I guess the concern needs to be front and center that if you're gonna be doing that much digging in pipes, and I'm sure the engineers have looked at it, we have a very unstable ground, and during heavy floods and rains, I suspect you're gonna end up with some pretty serious washouts. So you also might consider retention ponds around the area, larger retention ponds that would help hold back some of the water in addition to this, and also review the engineering for subsidence and impact fee issues that could arise in the future and drag some of that waste from the old land dump. Thank you.
I think the Commissioner, you know, anything we do as far as preserve the environment, okay, which in turn will bring tourists out, and I think that, we should, I'll make the motion.
Okay, well, there's, this is, this is just a discussion item, so unless there's any other discussion.
Mayor, I just wanted to make one, one comment. I think just hats off to the water work system. I think they work really, really good at this. We have the privilege, me and the Commissioner Mesmar, of taking a pretty extensive tour of the water facilities, the water plant, the treatment plant specifically, the one that's treating the water that is producing this, this source of water to now be Ramsey Park and, and the Soccer Complex. And it's pretty impressive, the quality of the water is being produced. Currently, if it's not used for any of these other uses that go back into the Arroyo, that in and of itself is a good thing. We're improving the quality of the water of the Arroyo, but I think this is another great opportunity to be seized as a city, and just wanted to, you know, congratulate Water Works and city staff for working on getting this, to make it happen with, with the help of the grant, of course, but it's good to see us reclaiming that water, putting it to good use. I think it's one of the questions we had when we saw, basically, quality drinking water being dumped back into the Arroyo. We were asking those questions, I mean, what can we do to reclaim that water instead of, you know, treating it or putting it back into Arroyo? So I think this is a good example of that. I'm not sure I'm drinking.
Daryl swears that he can make Carlington look like Ireland. So we're, we're, we're gonna hold you to it, because I think that's a great idea. All right, thank you, thank you, all those comments. Any other, anything else? Let's go to item twelve, consider take action to approve and adopt with effluent, he's gonna make a flip.
Not beer?
Consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading to designate no parking zone along L Street with Fair Park Boulevard and West Adams Avenue, the Splash Park.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The request was presented to staff due to concerns with pedestrian safety around the newly constructed Splash Park and L Street. Staff are by this concern with the non-site inspection and determine the need to place no parking zone along both sides of L Street. Staff also noticed the need for additional parking lot and consult with the Boys and Girls Club and obtain permission to utilize the parking lot to the south of the Boys and Girls Club. The proposed no parking zone will extend a length of two-hundred-and-eighty feet on the west side and two-hundred-and-eighteen feet on the east side of L Street, a hundred-and-nine feet north of West Adams Avenue, and three-hundred-and-twenty-five on the west side of L Street, a hundred-and-forty-five feet south of intersection Fair Park Boulevard and L Street, and two-hundred-and-twenty-eight on the east side of L Street, a hundred-and-twenty feet south of intersection of Fair Park Boulevard and L Street, outlining your packet. Staff recommends approval of the no parking zone?
Can we read, Captain, please?
An ordinance to establish a no parking zone located on both sides of L Street for a length of two-hundred-and-eighty linear feet on the west side and two-hundred-and-eighteen linear feet on the east side, commencing a hundred-and-nine linear feet north of West Adams Avenue, and for a length of three-hundred-and-twenty-five linear feet on the west side of L Street, commencing a hundred-and-forty-five linear feet south of the intersection of Fair Park Boulevard and L Street, and two-hundred-and-twenty-eight linear feet on the east side of L Street, commencing a hundred-and-twenty linear feet south of the intersection of Fair Park Boulevard and L Street. Authorizing the tiny vehicles parking segment no parking zone, establishing a penalty not exceeding two-hundred dollars for a violation of the provisions of this ordinance, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, one of the, one of the purposes I like to see is, closing that street, L Street. What we've done is make one be parked, and it's gonna be a real, uh, safe. And it's going to be a real safety positive for most all the kids coming out there now. So I think it's the next time.
Where we stand on our design for our entryway to the auditorium, we use that right way. Will we discuss closing that street down?
We've already closed it.
We talked about designing a kind of corridor, kind of type of entryway to?
We're going to make that a part of our parks master plan, Commissioner. There's going to be a lot of cost involved with that, so. We talked about maybe putting a fountain in the meadows and pavors and put there, but.
Pedestrian mall is what we talked about, but that's going to cost some money, so. Great, all right. Item 13. Consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading authorizing placement of two stop signs on 21st Street in each direction of traffic at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue. Establishing a fine not to exceed $200 for the driver of any motor vehicle who fails to stop and yield the right of way in obedience to the stop signs here and authorized. And then they are appealing conflicting ordinances provided for publication and other matters related foregoing.
This request was presented to staff as part of the design requirements for the 25th Street Hiking Bike Trail, which is being funded through Techstock Transportation Enhancement Program. As far as the requirements for the construction of the hiking bike trail, a control stop for vehicular traffic is required when the trail crosses at the intersection of streets for the safety of pedestrians and cyclists which will be using the trail. To comply with the Techstock requirements for the hiking bike trail, staff is proposing installation of stop signs on 21st Street at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue. Currently, it's a through street with stop sign and Jefferson. Additional two stop signs for both directions of traffic on 21st will create a three-way stop condition at the intersection. Including your packet is a layout showing the location, installation of the stop signs for your review. Staff recommends approval of installation of the stop signs.
Mayor, I just want to speak to this issue. Just want to, everybody to go back and recall when we modified our speed bump ordinance to include school zones. This particular area was one of the zones that I was seeing with the speed bumps. It's in front of the bottom of the school, the school and also on 21st Street on the public park, the bottom of the park. And it was determined that after we looked at it and did the traffic studies, staff was brought to my attention that we were going to end up having to put stop signs at these locations, we're pretty close to these locations. So we're going to forego the speed bumps in these areas and we're going to go with the stop signs which are required to comply with the hiking bike trail that's going to go to that area. I went ahead and urged staff to go ahead and get these stop signs in place during the summer so that when the school starts up, people are already used to stopping at these stop signs. They are right across the street from the school and the park. And I think that will go ahead and reduce or calm the traffic in that area in which we have a lot of pedestrian traffic. So there's several locations here, but they will be mandated officially by Techstock to comply with the hiking bike trail. That's what we're going to do before going at this time. And they'll go up this after the second reading?
Okay.
I just thought it was urban that we get them in this summer so that when the school starts up, we don't break in, do stop signs, drop by the school.
They won't be in the building.
So you try to read the caption.
An ordinance authorizing the placement of two stop signs on the 21st Street in each direction of traffic at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue. Establishing a fine not to exceed $200 for the driver of any motor vehicle who fails to stop and yield the right of way in obedience to the stop signs here unauthorized. Amending or repealing conflicting ordinances provided for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregone.
Some of them. All those favor say aye. I suppose, motion carries. Item 14. Consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading authorizing placement of two stop signs on 25th Street in each direction of traffic at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue. Establishing a fine not to exceed $200 for the driver of any motor vehicle who fails to stop and yield the right of way in obedience to the stop signs here unauthorized. Amending or repealing conflicting ordinances provided for publication and ordaining other matters related foregoing.
This request was presented to staff as part of the design requirements of 25th Street Hiking Bike Trail, which is being funded by Techstock Transportation Enhancement Program. Again, as far as the requirement for the construction of the hiking bike trail, a control stop for vehicular traffic is required for all trail crosses at the intersection of streets for the safety of pedestrians and cyclists which will be using the trail. To comply with Techstock requirements, hiking bike trail, staff is proposing installation of stop signs on 25th Street at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue. The existing conditions of 25th Street is a through street with stop sign in Jefferson Avenue. The additional two stop signs for both directions of traffic on 25th Street will create a three-way stop condition at the intersection. Including your packet is a layout showing the location of installation of stop signs. And staff recommends approval of installation of the stop signs.
Can we read the caption, please?
An ordinance authorizing the placement of two stop signs on 25th Street in each direction of traffic at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue. Establishing a fine not to exceed $200 for the driver of any motor vehicle who fails to stop and yield the right of way in obedience to the stop signs here unauthorized. Amending or repealing conflicting ordinances provided for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregone.
Some of them.
Start again.
Any other discussion? All those favor say aye. I suppose, like sign motion carries. Item 15. Consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading authorizing the placement of two stop signs on Grimes Avenue in each direction of traffic at the intersection of 25th Street. Establishing a fine not to exceed $100 for the driver of any motor vehicle who fails to stop and yield the right of way in obedience to the stop signs here unauthorized. Amending or repealing conflicting ordinances provided for publication and ordaining other matters related foregoing.
Again, this is part of the design requirement for the 25th Street Hiking Bike Trail, which is funded by Techstock Transportation Enhancement Program. As far as the requirement for the construction of the hiking bike trail, a control stop for vehicular traffic is required when the trail crosses at the intersection of streets for the safety of pedestrians and cyclists which will be using the trail. To comply with the Techstock requirements for the hiking bike trail, staff is proposing installation of stop signs on Grimes Avenue at the intersection of 25th Street. The existing condition for Grimes Avenue is a through street with stop signs on both directions of traffic on 25th. The addition of two stop signs for both directions of traffic on Grimes Avenue will create an all-way stop condition for the intersection. Including your packet is a layout showing the location and installation of stop signs. Staff recommends approval.
Can we read the caption, please?
An ordinance authorizing the placement of two stop signs on Grimes Avenue in each direction of traffic at the intersection of 25th Street. Establishing a fine not to exceed $200 for the driver of any motor vehicle who fails to stop and yield the right of way in obedience to the signs here authorized. Amending or repealing conflicting ordinances provided for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregone.
Some of them. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like sign motion carries. Mr. Garcia's in the audience, probably skipped out of 19 for now. Go to item 20, but I'm going to step out and follow that through.
Mayor Protem?
I'll go ahead and move to item 20. Consider take action to approve and adopt the resolution in support of the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority's South Padre Island Second Access Project. I recommend it all purpose as identified in the draft environmental impact statement.
Mayor Protem, the RMA has asked to adopt the resolution in support of the Second Causeway. The NPO earlier this year approved a project to fund General Grant Road. As part of that project, they'll provide connectivity from General Grant to the proposed location of the Second Causeway. David Garcia is here from the RMA to explain exactly what the resolution will do. It is an unvinding resolution as far as funding from the city, but it does show support for the project.
Thank you, Gabe. Mayor Protem, members of the City Commission, my name is David Garcia with the Cameron County RMA. Thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. We're here basically to ask for your support on the project that we have been working on for the last almost six years now, which is the Second Access Project to South Padre Island. Second Access, more commonly referred as the Second Causeway, Second Bridge to the island. We are in the draft environmental impact statement process as we speak. And the Federal Highway Administration has allowed us to proceed to this public hearing. The public hearing is going to be on July the 17th on the island at the Convention Center. It's going to be starting at 5:30 with an open house and followed by a presentation at 6:30. We invite all of you to be there to show support for the project. And we also invite the general public and people from the Rio Grande Valley to be there for this important project that is a valley-wide project that will help not only South Padre Island, not only Cameron County, but the entire Rio Grande Valley as we work to improve the economic development, growth, and job perspectives of our county and of our region. Just a little bit of history, we've undertaken this project back when the RMA started seven years ago in 2005. Previously, Techstock was a sponsor of the project, was turned over to the RMA. We worked with the city of South Padre Island, the city of Puerto Sabel, and the Laguna Madre officials at that time because there was some contention on the project. We've been able to get past those issues. And we've been able to work with the federal and state agencies on the environmental impact statement. The environmental impact statement is on our website, www.cameroncountyrma.org. It's about 1,700 pages long, four volumes. And there is an executive summary, so you can read that, read that piece. But we're asking for support from cities throughout the Rio Grande Valley. We've got support from cities in Annenberg, Farr, Willacy County, the island, obviously, Brownsville, San Benito, we're here tonight. We're going to be asking for support from our federal and state officials and anybody that can be at the event on July 17th. So with that, I'll open it up to questions if there's any questions.
I'm just curious, and 1,700 pages of environmental data. Did they find any critters or plants or bones along the way?
Not sure about bones, but I'm sure there's plenty of critters in the Laguna Madre area. I guess that's how you define critters. But the environmental impact statement is a very sensitive and lengthy process. It is the most rigorous type of environmental study that one would undertake. You have a categorical exclusion, then you have an environmental assessment, then you have an environmental impact statement. So typically, you take probably between five to 10 years, if you're lucky, on an environmental study for this type of project. So it's a long and lengthy project. There's a lot of work that they've asked us to undertake, a lot of studies up to this point. That's why it's taken all this time. There's been about 15 reviews from the different federal agencies, back and forth comments, and so we are ready to go. We're ready to get going to the final stage of this process. If everything goes well, we hope within the next nine to 12 months, we will be ready to hopefully get a regular decision from the federal government, from the Federal Highway Administration.
David, alternative to six is the preferred choice?
Commissioner, yes, at this point, the recommended preferred alternative, and I'll rephrase and I'll stress that recommended preferred alternative is six, alternative six. And we've been working with our consultants and with Federal Highway Administration to narrow down the alternatives. We went from multiple alternatives down to 12 and now we're down to this recommended preferred alternative. Doesn't mean that this is going to be the alternative of choice, but we feel that this is probably the alternative that will, you know, moving forward, will be the final alternative, you know, with a few modifications to, you know, different areas of the alternative. But that's what the public hearing is for, to get the comments and concerns from the public and take that back and solidify that alternative.
But right now, you're looking at using 509, right?
Yes, sir.
As the road?
Yes.
Have you done any traffic studies from people coming down road north using 509 to even go back to their, maybe to the island?
Not off of 509, Commissioner, but we have done traffic studies off of Highway 100. There, you know, if you're out on the island on any given weekend during the peak season and if there's an emergency out there, you're going to be stuck in traffic. Even if there's not an emergency, you're going to be stuck in traffic, you know, hours. I was in Bayview a couple of nights ago and, or I'm sorry, in Indian Lake, and there was an accident on the island a few weeks ago and all of the traffic was being routed through that community. So they were getting all the traffic through the road. Some of the concerns that they were raising were.
The only thing I'm looking at as far as I'm concerned is if we're going to lose 30% of traffic coming straight down 77 and taking 509 straight to the island. That's retail sales.
Right. We haven't done a. Right, we haven't done a traffic study, but we have done a growth and economic study over the next 20, 30 years in the Cameron County region. And one of the things that came from that study was that the northeastern portion of Cameron County was going to grow tremendously over the next 20, 30 years. You know, there's going to be growth north of Harlingen, northeast of Harlingen, Rio Hondo, Bayview, all that area. And plus, you know, all the traffic coming in from Hidalgo County and Willacy County. And so the way we look at it is there's going to be enough mobility and traffic to sustain or to improve, you know, the surrounding communities.
Is anybody thought about using Paso Real as an alternative?
Paso Real.
Highway, you want to go straight through 50, straight through West Avenue and all the way to Port?
That's going to be an alternative as well. You know, we're looking at different alternatives, but, you know, right now, this study strictly, the study, the focus of this study is for the bridge. And then, once we get through this study, we're going to look at all those different
All the other alternatives.
Alternatives and all the different roads leading into the different cities.
Because I would hate to have both cities lose all that.
I think Commissioner wants to stop there at Bass Pro Shop for the toll booth there.
That's exactly right.
The resolution basically supports a second bridge, right? Not necessarily a specific location.
That's correct.
It supports a concept.
Right, that's correct.
Any other questions?
I mean, I don't have any problems with any concept, I just some alternatives.
Mr. Moore, do you have a question?
I'll take the first up to the podium. This is Jerry Moore, 709 Towneley. Again, thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue. I know it's an important one. And I noticed that the mayor has stepped out. I guess he stepped out at the airport board meeting as well this past week for, I guess, this conflict of interest. Anyhow, I would just like to remind and remind you that you need to consider issues that are relevant on the island. And I have a report from the Texas Border Coalition. The mayor is on the executive committee with that also. It talks about all the cartel violence that is occurring here and the fact that we're losing the war on the cartel, with the cartel war. And what's happening today and in the near future, it's probably only going to get worse. And we know that we just founded issues on the island. I think the city needs to step forward and be protective, protective and be the gatekeeper for the island. You have the opportunity here to be the gatekeeper. This is going to start here and you have the responsibility to enforce TSA and control and get this drug war under control through your guidance and support. It's important. Anybody that spends time on the island knows that we are losing the war every day. And I would like to see a resolution tonight with you to support any TSA, any issues that can be done, both at the entrance and along the way to detect and arrest the problem we have with the cartels. Thank you.
Any other discussions, any other comments from the public?
Yeah, I'd like to say one more thing. If you take a look at Harlingen's crime statistics, we're lower than just about every other city in the valley. And so it proves that our police department is doing their job. So if you're going to be the gatekeeper, we got.
So if you're going to be the gatekeeper, we got the right guys to be the gatekeepers.
Good. Okay, let's stay on course here.
Yeah.
Roxanne, do you want to read this resolution?
Do we need to read it?
It's not a...
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'm going to motion. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion passed? Presentation of discussion, number of substandard dilapidated structures demolished and repaired in the city boroughs. That's a, that's a, established by the city attorney's office in partnership with the code enforcement department.
My name is Roxanne Bicycle Dornell. I am your Harlingen City Attorney, and today I'd like to give you an update on the number of vacant and substandard structures that the city attorney's office in partnership with the code enforcement department have demolished from the period of September 2011 through May 31st, 2012. As an elected commissioner and as citizens, we certainly have learned the impact that vacant and dilapidated structures have had on our community and the cost involved, and this impact has been substantial. The city commission has made it a priority over the last couple of years to make sure that we get these substandard structures down and, and get something rebuilt as soon as we can. I want to have you take an opportunity, there is a pamphlet that has been passed out to each of you, and that pamphlet is divided up into districts. It contains a total of fifty-seven properties that have been demolished, or structures that have been demolished. In the districts, you will also see a report on the numbers that have been demolished and/or repaired. So let's get started. We can take a quick look at these pictures up front. All of those structures have either been demolished or repaired. More information is available in that packet. I do want you to know that there is a three-person team involved in this. It is the city attorney, the city attorney's legal assistant, and our most important code inspector who has, works directly with the city attorney's office and is dedicated to working on demolitions. So the number of structures that have been demolished from September 2011 through May 2012 have been a total of fifty-seven. Last fall, I actually also gave you a presentation. It was a booklet similar to the booklet that you have in front of you today, and in that presentation, we had the number of structures that have been demolished and repaired from April 2010 through August 2011. That was a total of a hundred and twelve structures for a, a total amount of a hundred and sixty-nine. This hundred and sixty-nine structure demolition repairs does not include the number of structures that were demolished by the National Guard. So if you include the number of National Guard structures included with the one sixty-nine, you have more than two hundred structures in the city of Carling that have been demolished in the past two years. In case you're wanting to know how many structures were actually demolished by the owner, by the city, or even repaired by the owners, they're broken down in district for you. So Commissioner Casilla, we had thirteen. Commissioner Latwood, you had eleven. Commissioner Mesmar, we had six in your district. Commissioner Pepperrell, we had twenty-three. Commissioner Trevino, we had four. Now, I know that there tends to be higher numbers in some district versus others, but that's just the, the arrangement of our city. Some of your districts have more dilapidated structures than others. Seventy-eight percent of them were demolished, twenty-two were repaired or secured. There are certainly ideas that the city attorney's office can bring in terms of getting more structures repaired, and we will bring those ideas to you via the mayor's committee that has been formed. So so far, the city attorney's office has created a substandard structure tool. We have citations where we do our municipal court ordinance docket. We have the city board with the construction board of adjustment that really helped us get those hundred and twelve structures down, and then the National Guard that did the thirty-plus structures. There's other procedures that we could create in district municipal court that I can come back with you in the future, but I want you to know that the fifty-seven structures that we actually demolished used none of those processes, rather, we just sent a notice letter. When our hundred and twelve structures came down with the help of the Valley Morning Star, letting people know that the city attorney's office and the city commission were serious about cleaning up our city, after the hundred and twelve of the National Guard came down, people began to take our notice letter very seriously. So the fifty-seven structures that have been demolished or repaired were simply done by a notice letter sent on behalf of the city attorney's office and the code enforcement department. None of them were taken to the construction board of adjustments. What does that mean? Well, it cost the city about fifteen hundred dollars every time we had a construction board of adjustment hearing. Fifteen hundred dollars in terms of just preparing the pamphlets, having the staff available, using the whole day as a method of proving up the evidence of the structures needed to be demolished. So we've saved quite a bit of money in getting fifty-seven structures down, demolished by sending a notice letter out only. I want you to know that the, the construction board of adjustment is still a very important board and it still should be utilized. However, with that said, they were the heavy hand in the get-go that made it known to people that we are very serious about cleaning up. I do not know of any other city in the valley that has done the amount of substantial work in cleaning up the city and demolishing and repairing structures, so congratulations. I do want to give credit again to the legal assistant and to the code inspector who work on these structures on a daily basis. There is so much more left to do. If you know of structures in your particular district that you want the city attorney's office with our code inspector, one layout to concentrate on, we will be more than happy to do so, and we will continue to make sure our commitment is forward. We do need the resources. We do have those resources. We need to make sure that we continue to keep them, and that is the code inspector who does work with the city attorney's office on a daily basis and the time that it takes for him to do that. And of course, any additional training that may be necessary to be able to start working on more complicated structures, where more additional certifications for inspection may be necessary in a trial of judicial court.
I just want to start off, thank you and staff, code enforcement staff, and Francis, for your efforts in continuing this sustained effort to clean up our city, demolish these dilapidated structures. I think people, you know, we need to be reminded that these are health and safety issues. They're, you know, they contribute to gang violence, to drug use in our neighborhoods. This is a quality of life issue for the citizens of Harlingen, and I think that this is something that we will continue to, to put on the front burner to increase the quality of life for our citizens in our neighborhoods going forward. And I look forward to the National Guard coming in too and their share. That's always a good thing to have them come in.
I'd like to add something else, is over at the Daryl Lester Juvenile's Attention Center, they actually have the kids building houses. Now, we already knew from a couple meetings ago that two of those houses were built that were going to go into my district and the vacant lines that were, well, there's, well, I just found out the other day and had, somebody actually bought two more of the houses out there. So now you're saying new houses going in in empty slots, empty lots, so I think that's excellent.
And I'd like to add to Mr. Cropsaw and point out that property owners that clean up their properties enhance their own value, let alone the neighborhood's value in terms of property value and desirability for, for being able to, you know, for people to want to build their own neighborhoods. But I think that there's a lot of aspects, a lot of benefits for everybody to participate and, and hold themselves accountable for, for their own property, for the benefit of the whole community.
Which is why I recommend everybody read Malcolm Gladwell's...
Out Loud or...
Well, you could do it at the end of the month.
I think this is good. I'm glad that we're keeping the record of this. I'd like to actually go back a little bit further than two years because we started this back in two thousand, actually, we've done it all along, but, but we got serious about it and tried to increase the numbers back in two thousand...
Ten.
Eight and nine. I know that there were thirty-eight structures that we've, that we've done prior to, prior to these two hundred at least, so I, you know, I'd like to see us go back a little bit further because the, the number will be even higher than what's there. What? You know, where are we on structures like the warehouse on Commerce Street, just down, just down the road here?
It's Sun Valley Motor Inn property.
Actually, both of those properties have been on my desk, and I have been working on them, and I would be more than happy to actually place it in executive session to discuss the legal issues involving both of those properties.
I, I think that's a good idea.
Well, I've got warehouses right there, and I have a real check that even have them down. And, you know, the, the problem there is that, that it's still being paid taxes by the owner. You know, you have all those people walking around, they go inside, everyone could collapse and kill them. Basically.
Well, yeah, but that, for example, that, that's right, and that's why we need to, we need to focus on some of those. We did have a fire, HEB, the old HEB warehouse.
Where...
Where they, where they found a, you know, a man that was killed in that, in that fire. It was, I think, before you got here, but this, surely this warehouse over here on Commerce is on Union Pacific right-of-way, and we were able to get, you know, before you got here, we were able to get these two over here on Jefferson. They voluntarily took them down. We just had to put some pressure on them.
The structure is actually owned by a separate entity, but it is on Union Pacific right-of-way. I have made contact with Union Pacific right-of-way, and they have been non-responsive in participating in litigation against the owner of the structure that needs to come down. The owners of the structure actually want to bring it down, but it does have asbestos in the structure, and so they don't have the eight thousand dollars to remove the asbestos. In fact, the owners of the structure themselves began to tear it down themselves when the city actually stopped them when we discovered there was asbestos in it. So the building official, I'm sure, could give you more information about that, but that's the, that's the point we're at. Union Pacific is aware of it. I've sent them notices of it, and the owners of the structure want to bring it down, but they don't have the funding to do so.
Well, I would think eight thousand dollars is insurmountable. We'll, we'll figure out something good for that.
But there are other more complicated issues involving Sun Valley, and those would be more appropriately discussed in executive session, and if the, if the mayor and the commission wish, I can certainly put on an executive session for the next city commission agenda.
I think that's a good idea. I have no objections to that.
I think the report says... I think it's important to note that the staff had made contact with the owner, and we are working on a, on a solution for that. We don't have the, we don't have the full solution to it, but we are working on it, getting the necessary research to...
Do you think you have a report ready by next executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, so...
Just one other comment suggestion to staff. I think it's, there's levels of success that, that at least it gets the attention of, of some of our residents that have some of these issues, and we've had some, some success with that, and I think this, this proves that point. And I'm, I'm talking about like when we issue citations, it gets the attention of the people to, to comply voluntarily. I think it might be a good idea that if we were to develop some recognition of those individuals that have actually stepped forward and, and responded positively to the city and, and done a good, good thing. They've improved the quality of their properties, but they've also improved the, the quality of, of the neighborhoods by the aesthetics and just the appearance of their properties. So it might, I think it'd be good if staff were to develop, we give recognitions of a lot of different people, and rightly so. I think it'd be a good thing to follow up with giving positive feedback to these residents that have voluntarily complied with the desires of, of our community to improve the quality of life, as has been discussed here, and develop some kind of a certificate of appreciation, some recognition for them. I think that'd be a good thing. Low cost, but I think the return in developing that sense of ownership in the neighborhood would be a great thing.
I think you're right. I...
Commissioner, Commissioner Casilla, I absolutely agree with you, and, and the reason I'm reporting back on the past two years is because that's just when I, as a city attorney, have been involved. Surely there were demolitions before I was here, but I do want you to know that from my inception, as, as a city attorney, I personally send thank you letters to each owner of the structures that have been demolished. So I personally have sent more than two hundred letters, and all of those are in their individual files, property files.
I just, that's good. Those, take it a little step further and make it something that represents the whole city.
Agreed.
Formal certificate that would represent the city as a whole, I think would be a good thing.
You know, and I think there, there was a, was a concept at one time, and I haven't seen any yard signs lately, but where there was an award by some organization that had the...
The Valley Road.
Or the Valley Pride. The Valley Pride, and then we could identify somebody's yard, or then, you know, best kept yard, or something like that. Some kind of recognition.
I think it'd be a good start to take this...
There's a program there, starting at the outreach center, and they're having it for the summer, and they have some Juvenile going there, and I think next month they want city attorney and code enforcement and at least PDs to go out there and talk about having some type of a pride in your neighborhood and bringing it up.
We, we are utilizing them with the enough of money.
So they want, they want staff to go out there and do a presentation.
It's not to take anything away from staff, dude, I think that's a great thing, but I think something more formal of a, of a city as a whole would be an even better thing.
I just never told the commission that I did that. It was just one of those things I did, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that, but understood, sir.
I think that the key is to reinforce, one of the things that you touched on and I'm trying to articulate was the ownership. We need, we need our citizens to take ownership, and, and I think once they understand the benefits, you know, towards the economic benefits and the quality of life benefits of just cleaning up their own properties throughout the city, it's a huge, you know, it's a huge dividend, you know, for people to take ownership, and I think anything that we can do to educate people or reward people, you know, somehow...
Certainly, it's a domino effect. I mean, you see a structure come down, you're going to see the neighboring properties clean up as well. I just want to reinforce my gratitude towards the Valley Morning Star for making this publicized because I think the Valley Morning Star is certainly our mode of communication to citizens who are not in this meeting, and they certainly have impacted people complying. So, thank you, Valley Morning Star.
I'd like to add one other request on top of what the mayor's asked in terms of going back a little bit further in determining some of the demolitions that we've had in the past. I'd like to know on a timeline when we implemented some of the tools that we do, that we use now to facilitate some of the demolition. So if you could also put that in kind of a timeline, when we've adopted as a commission over the last, you know, five or six years, some of those programs that have helped us, that empower us to go and get some of this stuff done in the community.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, and we'll go on to, all right, move up to citizen communication. What are we having in citizen communication?
No, I won't.
Okay. We'll go to Iowa, twenty-one, four appointments.
There I have one. Reappointment of, of, with us, if you want your crowd advisory board?
Mayor, ahead.
I have one, um, to remove William Trepecock from the zoning adjustment in the form of Kenneth Benton to zoning adjustment.
Zoning adjustment, or by name?
Zoning adjustment.
Is that a board of adjustments? All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I have, you're going to have to bear with me, okay? I've got a, a, for, we meet with, Gonzales Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, now they're in Dawn Community Development Advisory Board, El Paso Gonzales Construction Board of Adjustments, Buddy Hawkins Contractor Board of Adjustments, Jesse D. Pedriell Commission of Investment Bureau, Arturo Gonzales Coffee Course Advisory Board, Arine Garza Harlingen Crowd, Galmore Harlingen Crowd, Ruben Del Rosso Parks Advisory Board, Connie Salas Senior Citizens Advisory Board...
Kenny Salas Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Laurie Miranda Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Um, I don't know about Patrick Bauer, but, you know. I've got one Garza Veterans Advisory Board and Alex Rayall Veterans Advisory Board. Any questions?
No.
All right. Mayor, I have one. We are gonna, hang on. I have, uh, this is to the, the youth, uh, members of the Library Advisory Board from Harlingen High School. Sidney Ilborn is the student representative. Samara Valley is an alternate member. And Harlingen South High School's Sabrina Seles, uh, student representative. Pedro Robles is the alternate representative. These are the recommendations of the library, uh, board.
Mayor, I make motion we adopt the board of...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Uh, so now we're gonna go to the item twenty-two, which is supposed to be session, we discussed all the items. Set chapter five, two, one, so chapter D, BTC, Government Code, Section five-five-one, twenty-one, zero, seven, one. Consultation with City Attorney's Secret, we're about to get along with Raymond with the government county, the city tax, and government finance, free investment zones, one, two, and three. Uh, file corporation Harlingen, see, you see requests. For the city transfer title, agency on both park and lot, section of Hurst Street, defense terrorism, very clear description, lots nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, three, four, and five, block seventy-eight, right from outside of Harlingen, Tampa County, Texas, five, five, zero, five, two, page fourteen, and five, five, one, five, five, one, point, zero, eight, seven, regarding commercial financial information from business prospects with which the city has to have economic negotiations discussed or deliberate financial risks. Business prospect does project content. Your motion to go to executive session?
Don't move. Second. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, for the executive session.